We came to fight for the city of Jackson, Mississippi. And as we're gathered here, it is mine to remind us that I believe it was John Maxwell who said, "Coming together is good. Staying together is better. But working together is best." So as we come here to display our unity, I believe that our mayor-elect will be excited if all of us agree that we're gonna work together to make Jackson a better place. And I trust that we will pray for the peace of our city. Pray that our city will prosper. Pray that our city will move forward with purpose. That's why we've come here today. We've come here to pray. And I promise you, I happen to believe that when we pray, and when we pray honestly and seriously, I believe that's how we substitute our weakness with his strength. That's how we do that. And so I'm gonna welcome you here again. And as you all are praying, all these persons will be praying. You pray, "Let's fight for Jackson. Let's pray for wisdom and guidance. Let's pray for peace. Let's just pray until the walls come down." And so it is my delight to welcome all of you here. We are delighted and privileged to have you here. And if you're gathered in a setting like this, it is absolutely impossible to do it without somebody singing. It is just impossible to do. And so Benjamin Cone III is here, and he's going to sing for us, and he's gonna sing "Your Great Name." Now, I gotta admit, I gotta admit, that it's very difficult to have a preacher pastor up here like this and to tell him, "But you can't preach." So while you're praying for Jackson, pray for me that I do not preach. Hey, Benjamin. Benjamin, where are you? Come on, my friend. What a tremendous treasure he is. This brother, hey man. This brother is a real brother, and boy, he's anointed, and how we bless God for him. Would you all receive him?
Bless the Lord, oh my soul, and all that is within me. Bless his holy name to the honorable mayor. God bless you. Now look, everybody, I believe before you pray, you need to praise God. Amen, somebody? Amen? So would you just rise on your feet all over this sanctuary? That's what I call it. A sanctuary. And could you do something real for me? Could you just take me home? Look at your neighbor. Say, "Neighbor, there is power in the name of Jesus." I want you to sing with me. Come on. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Everybody clap your hands. Come on. Come on, Jackson, are you ready? Come on, are you ready? Come on. We love to call your name. It's something we cannot explain. That happens when we proclaim your great name. Your great name, say. Come on, everybody sing it together. Your name is something we cannot explain. That happens when we... Your name. Come on, shout it. King. Now everybody clap your hands like this. I love the sound. We love to call. Oh. Oh. We cannot explain that happens when we... Your, your great king. She is no other name stronger. Say, things change. Yes, we will. Your king. She is no other name so powerful. Yes, Lord, we can. Things change. I believe when we call on your name. Now everybody lift your hands and worship. There is power in the... I hear you. Come on, say it. Power in the name. If you believe it, just wave it. Come on. There is... Y'all sound good, Jackson. Come on. Power in the name. Oh, there is power. Come on, let that praise rise in here. Come on. Oh, say it now with strength. There is power. Now clap your hands. Oh, things change when we call. Things change. Come on, everybody say it. Come on. Things change. Do you believe it this morning? Things change when we call. I'm free. When I call you, I'm free. Say, "I'm free" when I call you. I'm free. Let's go, Jackson. When I call your name. When I call your... Let me hear you. Things happen when I call. When I call your name. I'm healed when I call. Our city is protected when I call. Things turn when I call. When I call your name. There's peace when I call. There's security when I call. There's provision when I call. When I call your name. Now let there be a sound of praise. Come on. Somebody shout, "Hallelujah." I need to hear the citizens of Jackson scream, "Hallelujah." Come on, anybody know there's power in the name? Come on. Everybody say, "There is power in the name." He brings us together. He's turning it for our good. When I call your name. Somebody give the Lord a shout right there. Come on, give the Lord a shout.
I, um... I did ask you all to pray for me. My God. Oh, bless his name. We have four pastors who are gonna come and pray for us as we fight for the city of Jackson. Dr. Dan Ray Hollins, Grace Inspirations Church, is gonna pray for equity and justice. Pastor Chip Stevens from First Baptist Church of Jackson is gonna pray for the city council. And then Pastor Larry Weems, Davis Temple Church of God in Christ, is gonna pray for education and for the young people of our city. And Dr. R. K. Moore, Stronger Hope Baptist Church, is gonna pray for the healing of our city. Oh, bless his name. They will come in that order. We bow our heads, please. Gracious and eternal God, we bow in humble submission today as we pray this prayer for equity and justice for our city. We, over the years, have built this city called Jackson with office complexes, marketplaces, and a governmental infrastructure for the service of all your people. We confess that we've made mistakes along the way in our stewardship. Forgive us of where we have fallen short and where there has been bias and unfairness, whether intentional or unintentional. Now, oh God, our hearts are grateful that you have brought us to the pinnacle of this new era. Thank you for our elected mayor, Mr. John Horn, who will now take the reins of leadership on this day. Grant that we would or he would have a blessed... The blessings of your hand and favor as he steps into this sacred responsibility. Give him courage in decision-making, clarity of vision, humility, and a willingness to always seek you in his ways. Lord, we pray for equity. We pray for justice to undergird this administration. Let righteousness flow like a mighty river from the office of mayor to the city council persons, through city hall, through the varying departments, to our neighborhoods, our schools, our businesses, and even our homes. Empower Mayor Horn to lead with wisdom that comes only from above. Wisdom that sees every person as precious and every voice as valuable. I pray that you will bring down the walls of division, strengthen the bonds of unity in our city. Let every policy that emerges from this administration be reflective of compassion and every decision be guided by truth and fairness. I pray that those who feel forgotten, left behind, will find new hope and happiness to embrace a city where justice is the norm and dignity is never denied. Now we place this mayor, this city, and all of its citizens in your all-sufficient hands. Let your will be done in Jackson, Mississippi, as it is in heaven. In the name of Jesus, who is the Christ, we pray. Amen.
Let us continue to pray. Our Father in heaven, we begin by acknowledging that you are the Creator of heaven and earth. And therefore, as Creator, you own all things. Father, we also come before you in agreement that you have created each one of us. And you have given us a stewardship to cultivate that which you have given. So Father, as we come before you today, we do as your word commands us to do, and that is we pray for our leaders. Those who have been elected into positions to steward this which you have given. And Father, I pray that you will give our mayor and our city council your perfect wisdom. Your word tells us that we can come to you and we can ask, and you will give liberally and without reproach, and that's our prayer. That you will give them wisdom liberally and without reproach. Father, we also, as recognized, that as you have given us a task to steward that which you have given, that you have given us an example of how to do it through Jesus Christ. And Father, as we remember how Jesus, the King, girded himself with a towel and washed the feet of his disciples. Father, I pray that you will give our leaders that kind of humility, that desire to serve selflessly. Father, help them and help all of us be willing to put aside our personal wishes and desires and to cultivate what you have given for your glory. Father, we thank you for allowing us to be a part of this wonderful city. And we thank you for the plans that you have for this city. Father, help us to cultivate well. We ask for your help. We ask for your protection. And we ask for you to do what only you can do so that the whole world can see how great is our God. For it's in the name of Jesus, our Savior, and our example we pray. Amen.
Just before we pray, and this is part of my prayer, I want to read three lines of an article. It states, "Inside alleged recess plot by fifth graders to kill classmate, then stage it as a suicide." Four Arkansas, four fifth grade students, and these are girls, alleged to plan, lure a classmate into a bathroom, stab him, then leave him with a fake suicide note at recess. Thank you, Mayor. Let's bow our heads. Eternal God, the God of all creation, based upon your word, you stayed in all things, give thanks. And on this morning, we saying thank you. Thank you for the gathering and thank you for this purpose. Now, oh God, as we humble ourselves before thy throne and before thy feet, we asking you that you will turn and listen to you to us as we pray for our children, as we pray for our education system. As we pray, oh God, that we will be examples in every walk of life that our children will see you in us. Because, oh God, the only way we're gonna be able to make it is you. And help us, oh God, based upon your word. You said, "Suffer, little children, to come unto me and forbid them not." We thank you now, oh God, that now we are gonna be leaning and depending and focusing upon our children to give them a brighter day and that hope is in you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. And amen. Shall we pray? Eternal God, our Father, at this moment, we thank you. We thank you once again for your goodness, for your mercy, and for your kindness. Dear God, you looked and you answered. The whole world is in your hand. So is the United States of America and this great state of Mississippi in your hand. And this city called Jackson is in your hand. You looked and you saw what we could see. A great need in this city. And on November 2nd, you answered. As you gave Israel Moses to lead them out of Egypt and across the Red Sea and through the wilderness, you looked. As when Israel would need a rod out of this Timofjesse, you looked. You sent us not Jesse's son, but you sent us John Horn to be our leader, to be our mayor, to give a new sense of direction, new hope, to bring about change, to do it with love and do it with honor and civility. We thank you. We thank you, oh Lord, because as Israel was broken, carried in captivity in the Babylon, after seventy years, you brought them out. The prophets you had called, you heard them. You heard Malachi tell them to bring funding. You had Haggai to tell them to come out of their cellhouses and consider their ways. But you had Nehemiah to go down to Xerxes and ask him for letters to give to the governors beyond the river that he could rebuild the walls of Jerusalem. Lord, for this moment, you've given us John Horn to help rebuild your city. Jackson needs healing. We need to hear from you. We need a word from you. We need a spiritual word. We need spiritual power. We need an uplifting. Lord, you have spoken. And now, remove every barrier that causes us division. Take away the an fractious attitudes and mindsets that caused this city to suffer over the past years. Bring about new life, invigoration. Take this city out of triage and bring her into healing. You have given us a leader who's gonna bring healing to our city. I pray, dear God, that you throw your arms around him and around his family. Put your arms around his staff and touch the people of this city. Give him the strength, give him the intuition to love not just a part of Jackson, but all of Jackson. Love those of us who don't look the same. Love those of us who don't worship the same. Give him what he needs to love everybody. And may everyone from every part of this city be a part of this great government and a part of the great mood which is about to come forward. Heal this land. Heal this city with the sass of the Holy Spirit. Heal it, oh God. Do it and do it now. You said, "If your people, which are called by your name, would humble themselves and pray, turn from their evil ways, seek your face, that they would hear from you and you would heal the land." Heal this land. You have spoken, and this land will be healed. In the name of our Christ, we pray. Amen. Thank God that the new mayor is beginning his tenure in prayer. Bless the name of Jesus. Joanne Bell is gonna come and gonna sing for us. "There is Dunamis in the name of Jesus." Praise his holy name.
Amen, amen. Come on, bless the Lord with me. Put your hands together for God. Give it honor to God, to all the ministers here, to the new mayor. As my brother said earlier, "There is power in the name of Jesus." Do you believe that? There is power in the name of Jesus. He is able to do exceedingly and abundantly above all that we can ask or think. So today, God, we worship you in spirit and in truth. Amen? Amen. Hallelujah. Bless your name, Jesus. Oh, hallelujah. We praise your name, Jesus. There is power in the name of Jesus. There is power in the name of Jesus. There is power in the name of Jesus to break every chain, break every chain, break every chain. Come on, do you believe it? Break every chain, break every chain, break every chain. There is power in the name of Jesus. Oh, yeah, there's power.
There is power
in the name
of Jesus.
Come on, there's power.
There is power
in the name of Jesus. To break every chain.
To break every chain.
Break every chain.
Oh, yeah.
Break every chain.
Oh, yeah.
To break every chain.
Break every chain.
Break every chain.
Break every chain.
Oh, yeah. There's an army rising up. Come on, do you believe it? Hallelujah. There's an army rising up. Oh, yeah. There's an army rising up to break every chain, break every chain, break every chain. To break every chain, break every chain, break every chain. Come on, sing it if you know it. Hallelujah.
Rising up.
Come on, y'all. There is an army that's rising up. Oh, we praise your name, Jesus. There is an army that's rising up. To break every chain.
To break every chain.
Break every chain. Oh, yeah. To break every chain.
To break every chain.
Break every chain. Break every chain. So right now, we declare the chains are broken over the city of Jackson. We declare the chains are broken over the state of Mississippi. We declare the chains are broken over the mindset of the people. We declare the chains are broken over poverty, over crime. Come on, can you hear the chains? I hear the chains falling. Let me hear you. I hear the chains. Oh yes, they're falling. I hear the chains falling. Come on, do you hear the chains?
I hear the chains.
They're falling. God, we call on your name. We hear the chains.
I hear the chains.
We dear you, Jesus, to break every chain. I hear the chains falling. I hear the chains.
I hear the chains falling.
Come on, can we bless his name? He's breaking every chain. There is power in the name of Jesus. Come on, praise his name today. Oh God, we lift your name on high. He's worthy to be praised. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah.
Some of us have been praying for Jackson. I, uh. Let me, uh. I have, uh. I, 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 uh. I, I do, I do understand protocol and. And I know it's time for some more persons to pray, but I've, I've got a. I have a notion here. Uh, praise his holy name. Now I'm going to ask. In fact, let me just mention that. Wisdom and vision, of course. I'm gonna have Brother Singh to come and he's going to call him up momentarily, but let me just mention. He'll talk about Brother Maya. But peace and prosperity. Dr. Cook from Anderson United Methodist Church. And Bishop Ronnet Crutup is gonna pray for the mayor and for his family. New Horizon Church International. And for crime and law enforcement, Brother Forsen from. Senior from Greater Bethlehem Temple. They're gonna come in that order and. You all keep praying for me. I, I, I really wanna say something.
Good morning. I'm so pleased to be here today. To be part of our mayor, John Horn. The one thing you can see is inclusiveness. And now, since we are all included. We're going to pray to God. For. So they can work together. Jackson has everything. But the lacking is togetherness. So we pray to God. The city council and the mayor and the governor office, they work together. And there's nothing lacking in Jackson. If God blesses the togetherness. Now, it's a very short prayer and I would ask my priests to. Say a few words. In respect, if you, if you don't mind to stand up out. And we'll pray.
Come on, people, God, let's give God a hand clap of praise this morning. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. As we continue to go to God in prayer, I ask that everyone would bow your heads. Gracious and sovereign God. We come before you this morning in humble adoration unto thee. God, we thank you for how your voice speaks to us. How you speak to us about open hearts and open minds and opening doors. We thank you, Lord, for how your voice speaks to us about intentionality, impact, influence, and integrity. Lord, we thank you for how your voice speaks to us about commitment and modeling excellence. Oh God, we thank you for how you speak to us about vision. About the preferred future you have for us as your people. And Lord, your word declares. That people perish. For lack of vision. And your word further says, oh, people don't see what God is doing, they will stumble all over themselves. But when they attend to what you reveal, they are most blessed. So God, we come to this Jackson Convention Complex as most blessed people. We come here this morning, oh God, as those people who walk in victory, who talk in victory, who live victoriously. And here we are this morning, oh God, as your willing vessels, oh God. Ready to move forth with greater works. For your word declares very truly, I say unto you. Those who believes in me will do the works that I do, in fact, greater works than these. So Lord, we are ready. Jackson is ready. So God, we pray for peace for this city. You say in your word that I give unto you peace. Not as the world give. But my peace, you say, abide with you and in you. So God, we thank you for the promise of peace. We thank you for your enduring presence. We thank you for the assurance of your word. We thank you for that great company keeper known as the Holy Spirit. We thank you for everlasting eternal peace. And Lord, we thank you for prosperity. We seek prosperity for the city of Jackson. We seek the well-being of the city of Jackson. And God, we rally to your word that says, I know the plans that I have for you. Plans not to abandon us. Plan not just for us to fend for ourselves, but plan for our good, and we receive it here today in Jesus' name. Plans for our good, not to harm us. But to give us a future and a hope. And it is so. Under the leadership of Mary-elect John Horn. Let it be in Jesus' name. Let all who agree say amen, amen, amen. Come on, give God a hand clap of praise one more time.
Let us continue in prayer. Almighty God. From the very foundation of the world. You called forth John Horn. And you gave to him grace. You gave to him a great mind and an unusual intellect. And in time. For there's a time and a season for all things. You brought him forth. And he had a great desire to prepare himself. To be excellent. And in time. You gave him a, a good thing, a wife. A life partner. To cheer his heart. And to give him comfort. To be a blessing to him. And you gave them, in time, children. To cheer their hearts. To be with them. And to continue the legacy. In time. You brought him into elected office. And gave him grace. And an anointing for. Elected office. For thirty years. You caused him to be a senator in the state of Mississippi. But then, because there is a time and a season for all things. And though his desire may have been to help Jackson. Be all that it could be. He could only do it in the time and the season. That you ordained. And today. You have brought us. To one of the high points in that time and season. And so God, as you have today made him. Mayor of Jackson. I pray. For. An additional grace and anointing. Upon John Horn. And cause that grace and anointing to also be shared by Gail Horn. For they are one. God calls that grace and anointing. To help them and build them up. As they do this good work. Of leading this city. Oh God. Thank you. Draw them close to you. Help them. To do and be what you desire them to be. Oh God. And in all the things that you've heard us pray for today. Lord, would you do all of that that has been prayed for already for them? But would you also do exceedingly abundantly more? Than any of us can ask or think. So that this man with this woman are well-equipped. And will succeed wonderfully. In this task that you have given them to do. We thank you for it now. And the blessing and the grace that resides upon him and her. To be mayor of Jackson, Mississippi. In Jesus' strong name. Amen. Father. In heaven, in Jesus' name. Lord, we're so thankful to you. For your goodness, for your love, and for your kindness. And for all of your blessings. I thank you, Lord God, for where we stand today. And I thank you, Lord God, for Senator John Horn, who is now Mayor John Horn. And Lord God, in the name of Jesus. Even with him, we know that we need you. Except the Lord build a house. He that labored to build it is just in vain. You told King Asa, you said, as long as you be with me, I'll be with you. I pray that you help us to understand that the assignment is great. And Lord God, we can't do it without you. But Lord God, we can do anything with you. And I'm asking you to bless throughout this city and throughout the communities. And that you would bless us, I, I pray, to become all that you want us to become. And help us to understand, Lord, if we would just only look to you. And we would only, oh God, govern ourself according to your word and your way. And you will be with us every step of the way. I pray you go all the way to our homes and help us, our families, in the name of Jesus. Bless parents to be parents to their children. Bless, oh God, superintendents and teachers be leaders to their school. And I pray, Lord God, that you even bless us as pastors. That we will be spiritual leaders, oh God, as we should, when it comes to the congregation that you allow us to serve. Now I pray that you bless every elected official, oh God, to govern themselves in the way that they should. In the name of Jesus, that you'll be able to work in our midst as you so desire. And Lord God, in the name of Jesus, there's crime, there's crime in our city. But I pray that you would be with the law officers that govern these streets. Give them, oh God, wisdom and understanding, I pray. Give them divine protection, help them to understand, Lord God, that they've been ordained by thee, oh God, to serve. And Lord God, I'm asking you, in the name of Jesus, that you be with us every step of the way. And I know that there's demons that have been assigned to this city. But Lord God, I stand here today in your name and I rebuke those demons in the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus, Satan, I rebuke you, all demons that have been assigned to this city, in the name of Jesus. Lord, let us have victory like we've never seen it before. Today be all the glory and honor, in Jesus' name, amen and amen. Praise his name. Now we're gonna have. Another song. Joyful, joyful, every praise. Troyum Singers. Pastonia Ware, Pastonia Ware, Lakita, I believe that's right, Blunt, and Jason Harriston. Come now. Come now.
Thank you. Good morning.
Amen.
Joyful, joyful, Lord, we adore thee, God of glory, Lord of love. Hearts unfold like flowers before thee, opening to the sun above. Melt the clouds of sin and sadness, drive the dark of towns away, away. giver of immortal gladness. Oh, fill us with your light, God, fill us with your light. Oh yeah, fill us with the light of day.
Let's stand on our feet as we praise our God. He's worthy. Congratulations, Mayor Horn. Let's put our hands together. Hallelujah, every praise belongs to him. To give you praise. If you know the song, help us sing it.
Every praise is to our God. Every word of worship with one accord. Every praise, every praise is to our God. Sing hallelujah to our God. Glory, hallelujah, is to our God. Every praise, every praise is to our God.
Hallelujah.
Every praise is to our God. Every word of worship with one accord. Every praise, every praise is to our God.
Sing hallelujah.
Sing hallelujah to our God. Glory, hallelujah, is to our God. Every praise, every praise is to our God. Every praise is to our God. Every word of worship with one accord. Every praise, every praise is to our God. Sing hallelujah. Sing hallelujah to our God. Glory, hallelujah, is to our God. Every praise, every praise, every praise is to our God. God, my Savior. God, my healer.
My deliverer.
God, my deliverer.
Yes, he is.
Yes, he is.
Yes, he is.
Yes, he is. Every praise, every praise is to our God. Every word of worship with one accord. Every praise, every praise, every praise, every praise, every praise, every praise.
All of our worship.
Every praise.
All of our love.
Every praise.
All of our worship.
Every praise.
Every praise.
Every praise.
Every praise.
Every praise.
Come on, Jackson, every praise. Every praise.
Every praise, every praise is to our God.
Hallelujah. Thank you.
Hallelujah.
I, um... I'm gonna move expeditiously. I am. And I'm gonna have Dr. Adrian Ware to come, who's gonna pray for unity. He is from the church Triumphant Global. And I'm gonna ask Dr. Regina Buckley, who is my president here in the state of Mississippi, to pray for the future of Jackson. He happens to pastor Cave Chapel Baptist Church.
My God, he's good, isn't he? Oh God, in the blessed name of Jesus, we thank you for your goodness and your kindness. We thank you for the anointing that has come to remove the burden and destroy the yoke. We thank you for the shed blood of Jesus that has granted us grace. As we move forward in unity, I thank God for our new mayor. Right now, we shut down every spirit of strife, every spirit of pride, every spirit of competition and confusion, spirits of chaos. We send you out of this city right now. We place you on alert that we will speak the same thing. Jackson is ready. Jackson is ready. Jackson is ready. Right now, I ask that you place the spirit of wisdom upon our mayor. These next four years, I ask that you crown him with an understanding that he's never walked in before. I ask that you give him inspiration. I ask that his mind will open into realms that will make the city of Jackson a model of restoration of urban areas all over this country. I summon the spirit of wisdom and unity in those that are around him. I decree that like Solomon, had people around him that flowed in what you were saying. I'm asking that you would guard him from evil voices. Guard him from voices that will not bring forward movement. Right now, I decree that there is a unity in this city that causes Jackson to shine. I summon the spirit of wisdom and understanding, the spirit of counsel and might. I ask that the anointing of forward movement falls upon our mayor, the council, and everyone around government. I decree in the name of Jesus that these next four years will be so supernatural that we won't even recognize Jackson. I call forth miracles in government. Bring us together as one voice, one motive, and one heart. In Jesus' name, amen.
Won't you join me now as we lift up a prayer for the future of our fair city? Gracious and sovereign God, we thank you for this city, for the people, for the schools, for the churches that have shaped us, for the streets, the neighborhoods, the community people who have had a hand in raising us, the candy lady, the peanut man, for the rhythms of culture and music, food and art that connect us, and for the memory of it all that still lives in our bones. We thank you for Jackson, this city with soul. Not only for what it has been, but for what by your grace it shall become. And we come to you today as those who still believe. We believe in your power. We believe in your promises. We believe in your plans for the city we call home. We lift up Jackson, Mississippi, not just in remembrance of what it was, but in the blessed hope for its future. Yes, God, we thank you for the legacy of strength and creativity and resilience that has long shaped this city. Thank you for the artists and the advocates, the builders and the believers, the saints and the servants, many of whose blood yet cry out to you today for just, fair, equitable city that celebrates diversity and that, yes, operates with inclusion of all who live here and want to see the best for Jackson. God, we confess the brokenness we see, the weariness we feel. We see violence where there should be peace, decay where there was once vibrancy, and hopelessness where vision once thrived. And yet even still, we choose love over lament, purpose over pity. And with one voice, we declare, "Jackson is ready." Ready for a fresh wind, ready for a new reality, ready for a new era where all of humanity is cherished and honored, from the homeless sleeping in city parks to those thriving in gated communities. Let us see the value and the dignity of all humanity. Let us be careful to consider the welfare of all as we look to Jackson's future. Help us to finish the good works that need to be completed so that this city might indeed be a city on a hill, shines bright. Lord, teach us, seek the welfare and the prosperity of this city, not with lip service, but with deliberate action, with compassionate attitudes, and with unified hearts. Help us to build houses and dwell in communities and plant gardens and grow vineyards, knowing that as the city prospers, so shall we. Make us not just inhabitants, but healers, not just consumers, but cultivators. Let our investments be intentional, our relationships be redemptive, and let our presence be prophetic. Let our businesses, our churches, our schools, and our homes reflect the hope of heaven. We know, yes, that there are some challenges ahead, days that will require courage and boldness and faith. And so God, we pray that you give us faith to step into unknown waters, to build where nothing has been built, to dream what others have dismissed, to plant where soil seems to be dry, and to let us do so together across generations, across denominations, across zip codes, with a unity that confounds division and that reflects your kingdom. Today, give us eyes like yours, eyes that weep over what is broken, but eyes that look forward to what is possible. And we celebrate today what is possible. Children walking to school in peace is possible. Families thriving in dignity is possible. Businesses flourishing in integrity is possible. Leaders legislating with righteousness is possible. Public policy that reflects your divine will is possible. And civic decisions shaped by wisdom and compassion and equity are possible, because all things are possible to those who believe. And Lord, we believe today. We believe today that you are raising up a leader among us, a leader who will not only come to the church, but who comes from the church, a leader who is shaped by your word and committed to your way. Help us to build a future where Jackson is a model of a God-honoring community, not just in our rhetoric, but in the treatment of our city employees, in our wages, in our ordinances, in our practices, in how our leaders treat each other in public and in private. We pray for Jackson now, because Jackson cannot pray for herself. So we confess its sins and we plead for its redemption. We cry for her healing. And we commit ourselves today to be vessels used by you to do in this city what we cannot do on our own. So Lord, we simply say today, we ask you to do it now. Do it here. Do it in Jackson. In the strong, in the powerful, in the mighty name of Jesus, our Lord and our Savior, we pray. Amen and amen.
It is time now for us to collectively pray for for our mayor. And so what I'm gonna ask is for the mayor, Brother Mayor, if you would kind of have him to come down front here. And Buckley, you're gonna go down there with him. We're gonna ask the preachers here on the stage, if you all would go down and be with the mayor. You all surround him. Any of the preachers or pastors in the audience who want to come and be a part, just come down here wherever you are. We're gonna come around and lay hands on him and be close by him. And yeah, man, you're coming. Yeah, we want you all to come. Just come, yeah. Yeah, just come, just come. My Lord, yes, my Lord, yes. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, let the mayor have a seat there, will you? Let the mayor take a seat there. So you all can gather around. My God, yes. My God, yes, 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 yes. That's how we're gonna do that. All right, anybody else? Sweet hour of prayer. My God, when we pray, bless his name. All right, we want you all to just touch and agree.
Yes, Lord.
Yeah, let's touch and agree. I said, let's touch and agree.
Yes, God, yes, God.
Yeah, yeah. And Brother Buckley now.
Let us pray. There was a man who was sent by God.
My Lord.
Whose name was John.
My Lord, my Lord.
Eternal and everlasting Father, we thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
For this pivotal moment in the life of our city.
We bless your name.
We thank you for the call and the election of Mayor John Horn.
Yeah, yeah.
And we now lift him before you as he steps into the sacred responsibility
My God, today.
of leading this great city.
Oh, we bless your name.
As you raised up John the Baptist in what was a wilderness moment.
My Lord, my Lord.
We pray that you now would raise up Mayor John Horn to
Yeah, yeah.
to prepare a path of renewal.
Yeah.
A path of righteousness.
Yeah, yeah.
A path of restoration in this city that we love.
My Lord, my Lord.
As you did for John the Baptist.
Yeah.
Give John Horn the heart of a servant. The voice of a prophet. The strength of a pioneer. Let him not fear the faces of men or women who mean him and the city of Jackson harm, but let him stand firm in integrity. Firm in justice and firm in truth, even when the truth is uncomfortable. And even when the path forward is not clear. May he be a leader who listens deeply
Yeah, yeah.
to the people, to wise counsel, and to above all, to your Spirit.
Yeah, yeah.
May he govern not just by popularity or politics, but by principle and by purpose. Rooted in a vision that honors you and that uplifts all people. God, like you did for John the Baptist. Grant this John the boldness to speak truth to power. The humility to know that he is who he is not, and yet the confidence to know who he is. The wisdom to prepare the way for future generations. The courage to confront injustice and inequity and inefficiency, the clarity to navigate through confusion and chaos, the strength to withstand criticism without losing compassion, to grace to bring diverse people together toward a common God. And let him champion policies that reflect your justice. Steward resources with transparency. Build systems that serve the least, the lost, and the left out. Let his leadership be a voice crying, not out in isolation, but in unity with others who are commuted to Jackson's healing. And now today, may he be baptized, not just in the pomp and circumstance of this inauguration, but let him be baptized in your Spirit. Let him be immersed in the weight of purpose, filled with a heart of service, fueled with a vision greater than himself. And when the grass, when the task grows heavy, be his strength. When the voices grow loud, be his peace. When the criticism gets thick, be his assurance. When the answers seem few, be his wisdom. Surround him with advisors, courageous allies, faithful intercessors who will speak truth in love and pray through him and for him and with him. Now let his tenure prepare the way for a city reborn. A just city, a safe city, a clean city, a city full of hope. Let his service testify not of his greatness, but of your faithfulness. We ask it today in your mighty name, in your merciful name, in your matchless name, Jesus the Christ, who was baptized in the Jordan River, who reigns over all. Bless this John now in Jesus' name. Bless this John in Jesus' name. Hallelujah. We give you the glory, we give you the honor, and we give you the praise. Amen. Amen. Amen.
We give you glory, Jesus. We give you glory, Lord.
Oh, bless his name, bless his name. Oh, bless his name. Oh, bless his name. God bless his name. Thank you all so very much. Thank you so very much. Thank you all so very much. Let me, as we, as we prepare to leave, let me mention, if I may, for the moment, there's a great need for change in our city. And I want to remind us, John Maxwell, who undoubtedly is one of the gurus of leadership of our time. And in that celebrated book that he wrote years ago, The Winning Attitude, he talks about moving to San Diego in Southern California. And his friend there invited him to take a flight with him so he could see San Diego from the sky. And John Maxwell says that as his friend was taxiing and getting ready to take off, he noticed he kept his eyes on the instrument panel. And then he noticed that he kept his eye on a particular instrument, a gauge. And so he, he said, "Let me ask you a question. I noticed you kept your eyes glued on the instrument panel. There's one particular instrument that you kept watching carefully. Why and what was that?" John Maxwell said that his friend said to him, "That was the airplane's attitude indicator." And he said, "An indicator, attitude," he said, "Yes." He said, "What," he says, "The airplane has an attitude." And he said, "Whenever the nose of the airplane is above the horizon, that's a nose-high attitude." And whenever the nose of the airplane is below the horizon, it's a nose-down attitude." He said, "That's interesting." And then here's what he said. He said, "And the reason I watch that indicator so carefully, because here's what I know. If we're going to change the performance of the airplane, we have to change its attitude." If we're going to change Jackson, Mississippi, there are a whole lot of attitudes that have got to change. Those who serve in leadership in this city, in this country, in this county, in this state, attitudes have got to change. And, and I will tell you, I will tell you quickly how you change your attitude. Let this attitude let, let this mind be in you that was also in Christ Jesus. I, I, I had to say a word. Jesus. Equal with God. And in that connucious passage, he humbled himself. I, 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 I'm going to get out, but I attitude. Pompous, arrogant. Got to have a good attitude for this reason, and I'm out of here. The book says, "God resist the proud, but he gives grace to the humble." If we want Jackson, Mississippi to be what it ought to be, we got to have some humble folk around here. And realize serving is a privilege. And we need servant leaders. Glory. I'm out of here. Glory. I said, glory. I said, glory. Glory. Now, now I know I'm out of here. Oh, glory. To his name. Praise his holy name. Oh. God bless you, man. God bless you. Thank all of you for being here. Thank all of you for being here. And let me thank particularly all of these elected officials who are not part of the city. If you all, would you stand before we leave? If you're an elected official and you came by to participate, to be here, would you stand for us? Give them a real round of applause. Thank you all so much for being here. God bless you all so very much. Thank you for being here today. And I want to thank all of these preachers and pastors who came here today. Would you all appreciate them? Now I'm told that there are some special thanks for Dr. Taylor, the, the musical artist, and, and all these folk who decided that they would pray. Now, those of you who didn't pray earlier, you all sure prayed today. Praise his holy name. Thank all of you so very much. And for those who are responsible for the inaugural prayer, that committed persons, we thank you all. And for those who are responsible for working with the mayor, how we thank all of you all. And I'm going to ask now, because I'm told to do this, and I need to tell you exactly what they told me to tell you. They told me to tell you this. They told me to tell you that as we get ready to process out of here, we're going to allow the mayor and his family to leave first. All right, that's what they told me to tell you now, and, and, and I'm, I'm saying it just like they told me. And, and seriously, seriously, I mean, as serious as I can be, there isn't anything that Jackson, Mississippi cannot do if we choose to do it together. And so, and so I'm going to ask us, at this time, please stand as Reverend Haven Board of Galloway United Methodist Church offers a benediction of joy. Where's, where's the reverend? He, he right behind me. Okay. Listen very carefully. Now, when she finishes, the mayor and his family are going to leave first, and then the rest of us will leave after that. But then, of course, where's the inauguration going to be?
Service, the swearing-in service is here in this room.
In this room.
But we have breakfast refreshments, so if you would just go out those back doors and follow the direction of the hostesses, they'll be glad to serve you. And thank you, everyone, for coming today.
Hey, thank you all so very much. Give everybody a big round of applause. Thank you all for being here today.
Would you pray with me? God of grace, we come to you this day with glad hearts, because we are celebrating the call that you have placed on Mayor-elect John Horn and his answer to serve and live into that calling and this leadership role and responsibility for the city of Jackson. We have lifted our prayers to you, and you have heard them. Thanks be to God. Prayers of support and protection, prayers for your call to justice, and for our dedication to serving the city of Jackson, guided by your wisdom and love. May we be one in Christ, in unity together, delighting in the future you hold for this city. It is our prayer that Mayor-elect John Horn is covered by your grace in the days, the weeks, the months, and the years ahead. And may it be our commitment to continue to pray for him, for his family, and for the city of Jackson. May we strive to go back to our homes, out into our streets and our neighborhoods, our communities, celebrating this new day and living into the call that you have placed on our lives to love and to serve one another. With each day, may we bring joy and healing to the city of Jackson so that we may be a reflection and an example of God's kingdom here on earth. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. At this time, the mayor and his family will be exiting the room. Our pastors, you can exit the stage. Please remain with us and enjoy breakfast, breakfast refreshments as we prepare for the oath of office and swearing-in service that begins at 11:00 a.m. Again, God bless you. Thank you for coming. If you would, please exit out these back doors to the breakfast area as we prepare the space for the swearing-in service. Thank you for coming today. Exit out these back doors as we prepare for the swearing-in service. Please enjoy refreshments and remain with us.
The presiding officer for the oath of office ceremony, the Honorable Benny Thompson.
Good morning. Good morning. It's a great day for Jackson, Mississippi. It's a great day for the state of Mississippi. We're about to, over time, pick the new leaders for the next four years. This is what we do in a democracy. We settle our differences at the ballot box. Sometime we win, sometime we lose, but we don't tear the place up. So it's my honor and pleasure to welcome you to the capital city's inaugural ceremony for the mayor and the city council of Jackson, Mississippi. I'm Benny Thompson, and I'll be presiding during this segment of the inaugural celebration. We gather here this morning to install your newly elected and re-elected officials and observe as they take their oath of office to serve the people of this great city. I'm pleased that we can stand as a community to commemorate this iconic event and bear witness to another beginning, a newly elected administration, a new vision, a new energy, and a renewed commitment to build the city of Jackson.
and a renewed commitment to build the city of Jackson. Together, as mayor-elect, boldly proclaim, "Jackson is ready. The time is now." It is important for you, the citizens who live and work here in the city of Jackson, to come together for this occasion. It's our responsibility to come together and to work for this city and all its residents and move Jackson forward together. We come today to celebrate the dawning of a new day for the city of Jackson. The new administration wants to unite our city and engage everyone in experiencing and celebrating the events happening across the city. This is your city too. Today, we'll have plenty of time to clap. Don't worry about it. Today's music has been provided by the talented Doll Taylor. Thank you for entertaining us as we are preparing for the ceremony today. Let us give them a well-deserved hand for starting us off with the beauty of their music. We will now have the presentation of the colors by the combined color guard composed of members of the Jackson Fire and Police Departments. Following the presentation of colors, Landon Price will come and sing our national anthem. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand if you are able and as we receive the colors and remain standing for the national anthem. Thank you to the people of the color guard and obviously to young Landon Price for that wonderful rendition of our national anthem. It is always a pleasure to witness the presentation of the colors and hear the melodious voice of Landon Price. Bishop Ronald Crudup will now come forth to bring the invocation. Bishop Crudup is a senior pastor of New Horizon Church International. Following Bishop Crudup, Mr. Kane Ditto, former mayor of the city of Jackson, will come forth to bring the greetings. Mr. Ditto will be followed by the governor of the state of Mississippi, Tate Reeves. Let us pray. Almighty God, you have said, "This is the day that the Lord has made and that we should rejoice and be glad in it." Lord, every day is a gift from you, but then there are those special days. And we thank you for this special monumental day, a day of inauguration for Jackson, Mississippi. Thank you for the process that has brought about this wonderful time and this new mayor and city council persons that we are saluting and celebrating today. Thank you for this city that is gathered together across this place, representatives of the state of Mississippi that are here to celebrate the capital city. Thank you, Lord, for what you have done and what you will do. Bless all that takes place in this time. And God bless this time and let us feel your presence. It's in Christ Jesus' name that I do pray. And all who agree, say together, amen. Let's thank our color guard for that nice presentation. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is my honor to be here today as the city of Jackson embarks on a new journey with our new mayor, John Horn. It is a great day to be a resident of our capital city. I had the privilege of serving this city as mayor many years ago. It is a relatively small group who have held that office, only forty-three mayors since 1839. And I know that each mayor has understood the unique challenges that Jackson has faced. It is a place like no other. And I can say without any doubt that John Horn possesses the leadership skills to meet those challenges. I would like to acknowledge, actually again, our congressman from the second district, the Honorable Benny G. Thompson. And let's give him another round of applause. I also want to acknowledge our governor, Tate Reeves. Governor, thank you for being here. And our lieutenant governor, Delbert Hoesman. Governor, thank you for being here. We have a number of Mayor-elect John Horn's colleagues from the Mississippi Legislature with us as well. Would you please stand and be recognized? If there are any other elected officials, former mayors of this city or mayors of neighboring cities, please stand and be recognized. I know there's some. See Mayor Johnson here. Thank you. If there are any other elected officials, please stand and be recognized at this time. We are pleased to have all of you here today along with members of the clergy to show appreciation and support for our mayor-elect and his family and the council members and their families. I'd like to take just a moment of personal privilege here to acknowledge my good friend Kenny Stokes. And the reason I'm doing this to him is because he was on the city council when I was mayor. Kenny, thank you for your long service to our city. We really appreciate it. We welcome, we welcome all of you to this important event, the dignitaries, the religious, educational, community leaders, business persons, and other citizens of the city. Today is a celebration. It is a time for excitement. And it is a privilege for us to come together to witness the swearing in of the new mayor and the council members whom we have entrusted to lead and watch over our city. The fabric of Jackson is comprised of our neighborhoods. They represent the foundation, the backbone of our city. Each is unique and special within itself. And so, I want to emphasize that the challenges we face cannot be met by one man or one council. It will require each neighborhood with its history and talents and spirit and know-how to come together to give Mayor John Horn and the council the support and energy they will need to make a lasting difference. Our recent election shows that we, the citizens of Jackson, believe wholeheartedly the mayor-elect Horn is ready to embrace the challenges and lead our capital city with vision, honesty, transparency, and determination. All of us here not only wish him our best, but we pledge to give him our best to make Jackson the kind of place that we know it is destined to be. It is truly an exciting time to be a citizen of Jackson, Mississippi. Thank you.
Well, good morning. I just want to begin by thanking Bishop Crudup for taking us to the Lord in prayer and reminding us that in the city of Jackson, Mississippi, when we begin a meeting, we do so by praying to an Almighty God. And also, just want to mention one more time, Landon Price. For, let's give him a round of applause. For reminding us and illustrating the kind of talent that exists right here in Jackson, Mississippi. Well done, sir. It's an honor to be here with you today as we start a new chapter in the storied history of Mississippi's capital city. And to celebrate the swearing in of a newly elected city council, congratulations to each of you. And to a new mayor who has spent his life in service to this community. That man is incoming mayor, John Horn. Mayor Horn is no stranger to public service. He brings to the mayor's office not just a wealth of experience, but a deep love for this city and a strong vision for its future. He's been a tireless advocate for the capital city in the state senate. And I dare say, no one can speak more authoritatively on that fact than someone that had to deal with him and his passion daily for eight years. Someone such as myself who was a two-term lieutenant governor. And I'm sure Lieutenant Governor Hoesman can speak to that as well. Now, now, make no mistake, then Senator Horn, and I did not always agree on everything. And I think we would both say today that now, soon-to-be Mayor Horn and I are probably not always going to agree on everything. But I hope and I sincerely believe that there is one overarching theme on which we have full agreement. The city of Jackson is vital to the future of Mississippi. Our capital is more than a geographic center. It's a cultural hub, an economic driver, and a symbol of who we are as a state. For Mississippi to reach our full potential, we need Jackson to succeed. And I believe from the bottom of my heart that Mayor Horn and I share a goal. We both want to see this city and this state thrive. That's why today is more than just a swearing in. It's about a renewed commitment to partnership, to progress, and to the people of this great city. I want everyone here to know that the state stands ready to work with Mayor Horn and the city of Jackson. We may not always agree on everything, and that's okay. But what matters most is that we keep our eyes on the bigger picture, safer neighborhoods, stronger schools, clean water, good jobs, and opportunity for every Jacksonian. Mayor-elect Horn, I commend you for stepping forward to lead at this critical moment. Sir, you have a big job in front of you. It is not going to be easy, but I have no doubt that you will bring the same thoughtfulness, energy, and determination to this role that you've shown throughout your career. Together, we can write a new story for Jackson, one rooted in collaboration and shared purpose. The challenges are real, but so is the potential. And I believe in what's possible if and when we work together. Not as what many politicos and even some of our constituents may see as a mutually beneficial adversary, but as partners. Congratulations, Mayor-elect Horn. I look forward to working alongside you. And I know all of Mississippi joins me in wishing you good luck as you take on this enormous responsibility. Thank you, sir. May God bless you. Thank you, sir. May God bless you. May God bless the city of Jackson, and may God bless the great state of Mississippi.
Thank you, Bishop Crudup, former mayor Ditto, and Governor Reeves, for the inspiring prayer and greetings. Now, we all heard all the good stuff that people said what they're gonna do for Jackson. Mayor, I know at some point you go looking forward to collect, and I'm excited about it. And now, I'm happy to invite Dr. Juanita Sims Doty to come forth with the introductions of the special guests and sponsors.
Good morning. Congressman Benny G. Thompson, it's always a pleasure to serve with you. Thank you for giving up your time to be with us today and serving as our presiding officer. Let's give another round of applause. And of course, Mayor John Horn, thank you for this opportunity to serve as the inauguration chair for what I know is one of the most important times in your life, but it has indeed been my honor to serve in this capacity. Governor Reeves, Lieutenant Governor Hoesman, our special guests, ladies and gentlemen, this is an exciting time in the city of Jackson. Don't you agree? We have had leaders and friends of Mayor Horn and of the city council members to come from all over the country and from all parts of the state of Mississippi to be with us, and we are so happy you did. Now, as you know, the general election took place on June 3rd, right? That meant we only had approximately twenty-seven days to plan for events for this inaugural day, but our inaugural team rose to the occasion. Before I introduce them to you, I would like to thank our corporate sponsors. They so generously contributed to these inaugural activities. If you are one of our sponsors, and we are going to do a better job of introducing you tonight at the gala, but I want you to stand wherever you are in the audience, our corporate sponsors, just please stand. Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. You will see all of the sponsors listed in the program, of course, and they have been rolling on the screen throughout the day, and they will continue to roll this evening at the gala. Thank you again for supporting us. Again, we have had the pleasure of working with a dynamic team of leaders who have given all their all over the past twenty-seven days of meetings and planning the day for you. All of our committee chairs, co-chairs, and members are the absolute best. I would like for our honorary chairs, First Lady Gal Horn, please stand. Give her a round of applause. And first, not First Lady, but Mrs. Donna Barksdale. She's sitting here. Will you please stand? These are our honorary co-chairs. Thank you. My outstanding co-chairs, the Honorable Mike Espy, Betsy Bradley, please stand, and Ermea E. J. Russell. Thank you. In addition to these phenomenal leaders, we had chairs and co-chairs of all of our events and activities. Chairs and co-chairs, wherever you are, and they all might be still working somewhere, but please stand if you are co-chair or chair of the events. Thank you. Here they are over here. You will see the list of names of our committees in your program. When you see these committee members, please thank them for their exceptional work. All of the committee members, will you please stand? Host hostesses, all of the committee members, will you please stand? Wherever you are, they're all, all over the place working. Thank you. We had an absolutely inspiring prayer service this morning. Pastor Tanya Ware and Rinaldo James chaired the prayer service, and we had many religious leaders who prayed for our city, our city council, and our ma, and our mayor. So we thank you for the prayer service, our chair and co-chair. Yes, please, give them a round of applause. And now, leading our oath of office swearing-in ceremony, we have Rika Lewis Payton as our chair, and Debbie Good and Dr. Beverly Hogan serving as co-chairs. Please stand so we can recognize you. Thanks to all for all that you have given, your time, your talent, to ensure the success of these inaugural activities. Mayor Horn, and members of the city council, and the citizens of Jackson, we do this because we love you, we love our city, we love Jackson, and Jackson is ready, and the time is now. We have a new mayor coming in. I'm excited. I'm ready to work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Doty, for the recognitions. We join in expressing our appreciation to all of you and those who worked to make this event successful. So I could do a lot, but now, I know a lot of you came for the swearing-in ceremony, and we'll get to it, but now it's my pleasure to introduce to you the Mississippi Mass Choir.
Hallelujah! You imagine what I'm blessing in here? You can bless him today. I know we're a brother dignitary and important people, but the King of Peace, the Lord of Lords, it's because of Him that we are able to be here today. So, Father, so just give him a good God bless him. We honor him today. Hallelujah!
Well, I know you came for the swearing-in, but I also know you came to hear the Mississippi Mass Choir, and they did not disappoint you. Thank you so much. We will now begin with the administering of the oath of office. The members of the city council will take the oath of office, and joining them are the judges who will administer their respective oath of office, and family members who will hold their bibles. The Honorable Corey Wilson will administer the oath toward one councilman, Ashley M. Foot, and holding the Bible is Susie Foot. The Honorable Crystal Wise Martin, county judge, will administer the oath toward two councilwoman, Tina Clay, and holding the Bible is Henry Clay III. The Honorable Fay Peterson will administer the oath toward three councilman, Kenny Stokes, and holding the Bible are Dr. Keith Stokes, attorney Keisha Stokes-Hugh, and Kenitha Stokes. The Honorable Tommy Turner Green will administer the oath toward four councilman, Ann C. Grzel, holding the Bible are Mr. Vincent Grzel and Mr. Jay Van Tains. The Honorable Yemi King will administer the oath toward five councilman, Vernon W. Hartley, and holding the Bible is Pamela Junior. The Honorable Judge Frank Sutton will administer the oath toward six councilwoman, LaShisha Brown Thomas, holding the Bible is Pastor Dennis Williams. The Honorable Kevin Bass will administer the oath toward seven councilman, Kevin Parkinson, and holding the Bible is Stephanie Parkinson. The oath will be administered in order of wards, beginning with ward one and ending with ward seven. We will begin. Please take your place at the podium.
Good morning. A little hard to follow the choir, I will say, but we're gonna do our best. If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ashby Foot.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support and true allegiance bear.
That I will faithfully support and true allegiance bear.
The constitutions of the United States and the state of Mississippi, and obey the laws thereof.
The constitution of the United States and the constitution of the state of Mississippi, and obey the laws thereof.
That I am not disqualified from holding office.
That I am not disqualified from holding office.
By the constitutions of the United States or the state of Mississippi.
By the constitutions of the United States or the state of Mississippi.
That I will support and obey the laws, ordinances, and resolutions.
That I will support and obey the laws, the ordinances, and the resolutions.
Of the council of the city of Jackson.
Of the council of the city of Jackson.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
On which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, and Godspeed.
Are we ready? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I instate your name.
I, Tina Clay.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
The constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Mississippi.
And the constitution of the state of Mississippi.
And obey the laws thereof.
And obey the laws thereof.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
From holding the office.
From holding the office.
Of city council.
Of city council.
Of the city of Jackson, Mississippi.
Of the city of Jackson, Mississippi.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Upon which.
Upon which.
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Kenny V. Stokes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
The constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Mississippi.
And the constitution of the state of Mississippi.
And obey the laws thereof.
And obey the laws thereof.
That I am not disqualified from holding.
That I am not disqualified from holding.
The office of ward three city council member.
The office of ward three city council member.
Of the city of Jackson, Mississippi.
Of the city of Jackson, Mississippi.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God. I'm gonna say thank you to my children for coming, my grandchildren, and my son, the doctor.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Thank you for your service in the past four years. I look forward to you being a councilman for the next four years.
Thank you.
If you'll repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brian Grzel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
And true allegiance bear.
And true allegiance bear.
To the constitution of the United States.
To the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution for the state of Mississippi.
And the constitution for the state of Mississippi.
And obey the laws thereof.
And obey the laws thereof.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
From holding office.
From holding office.
By the constitution of the United States.
By the constitution of the United States.
Or the constitution of the state of Mississippi.
Or the constitution of the state of Mississippi.
That I will support and obey.
That I will support and obey.
The laws.
The laws.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the council of the city of Jackson.
Of the council of the city of Jackson.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you so much.
Bless you.
Congratulations. I state your name.
I, Vernon William Hartley, senior.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
The constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Mississippi.
And the constitution of the state of Mississippi.
And obey the laws thereof.
And obey the laws thereof.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
From holding the office.
From holding the office.
Of ward five city council member.
Of ward five city council member.
Of the city of Jackson, Mississippi.
Of the city of Jackson, Mississippi.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, LaShia Brown Thomas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Support the constitution.
Support the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the constitution.
And the constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
Of Mississippi.
Of Mississippi.
And obey the laws.
And obey the laws.
Thereof.
Thereof.
That I am not.
That I am not.
Disqualified.
Disqualified.
From holding the office.
From holding the office.
Of ward six.
Of ward six.
City council member.
City council member.
Of the city of Jackson.
Of the city of Jackson.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which.
Upon which.
I am about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Good morning. Put your hand raised, you're ready. You're here.
I'm here.
I'll repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Kevin Parkinson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
The constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Mississippi.
And the constitution of the state of Mississippi.
And obey the laws thereof.
And obey the laws thereof.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
From holding the office of.
From holding the office of.
Ward seven city council member.
Ward seven city council member.
Of the city of Jackson, Mississippi.
Of the city of Jackson, Mississippi.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office upon which.
Of the office upon which.
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
And now we will have the administering of the oath of office to Mayor-elect John Horn by the Honorable James Graves, Judge of the United States Court of Appeals for the Fifth Circuit. And standing with the mayor-elect are his wife, Linda Gail Horn, who will hold the bible, his daughter, Charlotte Jade Horn, his son, John Shira Horn, and his campaign manager, benefactor, and everything, his father, Charlie Horn. Immediately following the oath of office to the mayor, Judge Crystal Wise Martin will administer the oath of office to the citizens. The oath to the citizens will again, we will then hear from the incomparable Mississippi Mass Choir.
Wake up. Come on up.
We can't do this without you.
At a moment filled with hope, excitement, potential, it is indeed an honor for me to have this opportunity to administer the oath of office to my friend, Mayor-elect, at least for the next 60 seconds or so, and then it's mayor. Mayor-elect, John Horn. If you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I instate your name.
I, John Horn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
And true allegiance bear.
And true allegiance bear.
To the constitutions of the United States.
To the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Mississippi.
And the state of Mississippi.
And obey the laws thereof.
And obey the laws thereof.
That I am not disqualified from holding office.
And I'm not disqualified from holding office.
By the constitutions of the United States.
By the constitutions of the United States.
Or the state of Mississippi.
Or the state of Mississippi.
That I will support and obey the laws.
That I will support and obey the laws.
Ordinances and resolutions.
Ordinances and resolutions.
Of the council of the city of Jackson.
Of the council of the city of Jackson.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, ladies.
We have one last oath. And this one is probably the most important. Good morning, my name is Crystal Wise Martin. And it is my distinct honor and pleasure to administer the oath of support for the citizens of Jackson, Mississippi. But before we begin this oath, let me say this. The oath you are about to take is symbolic. It does not confer an office or authority. But it does reflect something extremely important. Your personal commitment to the values that sustain strong, healthy, and inclusive community. As Helen Keller once said, "Alone, we can do so little. But together, we can do so very much." This moment reminds us that the strength of our community lies not only in our elected officials, but in each one of us. Standing together, giving our time, our voices, and our hearts to the betterment of our great city. This is not a political act, it's a civic one. By taking this oath, you are affirming your role in helping build a city where dialogue is welcomed, participation is encouraged, and mutual respect is practiced each and every day. In that spirit, I now ask that we all stand for the people's oath of support for our mayor and our city council. And at the conclusion of the oath that I will read, I'm not gonna ask you to repeat each word. I want you to give a resounding "we will", just like you were listening to the Mississippi Mass Choir, okay? That's what we want to hear. The oath. I do solemnly pledge my support to the mayor of the city of Jackson, the city council, and to the city we all call the capital of our beautiful state of Mississippi. I pledge to be an active, responsible, and engaged citizen, to listen with empathy, speak with respect, and to serve my community with purpose. I will work alongside my neighbors, our leaders, and all people of goodwill to build a Jackson that reflects our highest values. I pledge to uphold the dignity and unity of our city. I will speak words that uplift, act in ways that bring us together, and stand against anything that divides us. For I know that true progress is not the work of one, but the responsibility of all of us. I will honor the laws that protect us, defend the rights of every citizen, and strive to create a Jackson where every child can dream, every family can thrive, and every person is treated with dignity and respect. Together, we will rise above our challenges. Together, we will invest in our shared future. Together, we will shape a Jackson that reflects the strength, the pride, and the promise of its people.
We can overcome any challenges that we have. The mayor and council members are encouraged to engage with citizens, listen to their concerns, and to work collaboratively to build a stronger and more vibrant city. We, the community leaders and citizens, pledge our support for these efforts. The entire community is eager to see the positive change and contribute to the growth and prosperity of our city. Let's leave here today with a shared sense of purpose and renewed commitment to work together for the betterment of our community. Thank you to all of you for attending this important event. And to the new mayor and council members, thank you again for your willingness to serve. May your leadership be guided by wisdom, justice, and a commitment to the well-being of all. Guys, we're all in this together. But Jackson is ready, and the time is now.
Good afternoon. This committee runs a tight ship. They gave me three minutes. But I can tell you, I'm only gonna take one minute because I've got to thank our congressman. He has done so much for the city of Jackson, his district, and the state of Mississippi. And I've known him since he was a puppy. And he was a student at Tugalo. But three or four years ago, former Governor Webb won a pass. And I always thought of him as the greatest living Mississippian. And after he passed, I can assure you that this is the greatest living Mississippian today. John, not John, Mr. Mayor called me a couple of weeks ago and said, "Reuben, would you say a few remarks at my swearing in?" And I said, "John, I forgot how to tie a necktie." John thinking I'm serious said, "Well, you can wear a white turtleneck shirt." And I look around in this audience and think in a couple of days about what I was gonna say. One thing is definite, and that is there is nobody in this room who's experienced Jackson as I have. I was born on Dalton Street, went to the public schools, graduated from Jimmy Hill High School. All right. Practiced law on Ferris Street for 10 years. Five of those years with the NAACP Legal Defense Fund. Fred Banks and I had mailed Leventhal suits to the city of Jackson, the state of Mississippi. We integrated the schools. Is Fred here by any means? There he is. Stand up, Fred. Fred has a distinction that I think nobody has. He served on the board, the National Board of the NAACP, for 50 years. I've been involved with the city of Jackson. I ran for city commissioner in 1969, when there was a commission form of government, and obviously I lost. Russell Davis appointed me as a municipal court judge in 1977. And I have experienced Jackson. And I'll just give you an example. I knew the first black police officer, Joe Lann. Joe's beat was Ferris Street. He didn't have a car, and he couldn't arrest white folk. I knew the first black fireman, Chief Graham. I knew the first black. I knew the first black school bus driver, Charles Jones. And you might not have thought that that was important, but if you didn't get on Charles' bus, you had to get it in the back. I have known our, I was about to say John, our new mayor, for a long time. He and I have worked on so many matters together. Some of them successful, some of them not so successful. But there were two things that worked on that I need to mention to you. With John's aid and assistance, and Kane Ditto's leadership at the Department of Archives and History, and Kate's support, and William Winner's support, we convinced the Mississippi Legislature to spend $90 million in downtown Jackson on a civil rights museum. The only state-owned civil rights museum in America. The other project that John took personally almost as much as I did was to change the state flag, which was around for 125 years. Our Lieutenant Governor and my former law partner, Delbert Hoesman, took the lead. The Governor, Kane Ditto, raised a lot of money to help on that effort. But that flag had a different meaning to me than probably anybody else. I was a lawyer for 58 years. 15 of those years, I was a judge. But every time I walked into a courtroom, that flag says something to me that I wasn't welcome. And I want to thank John for the leadership that he's displayed in the Senate over the last 30 years. I feel so good about my city and what this congressman is going to do to help us further. Bring in some more money from Washington. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and congratulations. I ain't going to say John.
Well, let me say to Judge Gibbs and Justice Anderson, thank both of you for your well-placed remarks. And we commend you for your continuous leadership and service to not just the city and state, but this nation as a whole. Judge Anderson's relatives live in Bolton, Mississippi. I knew Judge Anderson's daddy before I knew him. That's all I'm going to say. All right? Yeah. My first experience about being away from home after 6 o'clock in the evening, I was with his daddy. So we go way back. And the business is still there. Now, if you want to know, catch me after that. I'll tell you where it is. So ladies and gentlemen, we've had a good time here. But I do want to bring back Landon Price to sing "Lift Every Voice and Sing." Let us stand.
God bless you. Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven rings. Ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the leaning skies. Let it ring sound loud as a rolling sea. Let's make a big sound. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught. Sing a song, hey, yeah. The present has brought us facing the rising sun of our new day begun. Let us march on till victory is won. Second verse. Stony the road we trod, bitter the chastening wrath felt in the days when hope unborn had died. The steady behalf now we're really free. Come to the place for which our father sired. Now you know what to do. We have come over away with the tears that been worn. Oh, we have come treading our path through the blood of our slaughter. Out from the gloomy past till now we stand at last where the bright gleam of our bright star is cast. One more. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears. Thou who hast runth thus far on the way. Thou who hast by thy mind led us into the light. Keep us forever in the path we pray. Blessed are feet stray from the places of God where we met thee. Ah, drunk with the wine of the world we forget thee. Shadowed beneath thy head may we forever. Lift your hands when you say this. True to our God, true to our native land.
Thank you so much. Let's give Landon Price another hand. Thank him for sharing his talent with us today. That is indeed the future. So this momentous day is made possible because of the grace of God, the active engagement of people like you in this room, even more important, the support of loving families. The work ahead for this council and mayor would need the support of their respective families. We've met the mayor's family here earlier, and we've seen some of the families of our council people. So I want to thank you for your continuing love and support that you give them and those willingness for you to share them with all of us. They need your help to direct and guide this city as we move forward. So ladies and gentlemen, we are nearing the close of our program. Please be advised that after this dismissal, continue to enjoy the music of Dow Taylor as you exit this room for refreshments and entertainment by our very own John Yousadema. You are invited to make your way to the receiving line to congratulate our mayor and his family, as well as the council members. You are also welcome back to this Jackson Convention Center complex tonight for the inaugural ball at 7:00 PM. It is free and open to the public. Now for our benediction. Bishop Sharma Lewis Logan, Mississippi Conference of United Methodist Church will dismiss us. Please continue to enjoy the music from Dow Taylor as you leave the room. Please stand, if you are able to, for the benediction. Bishop Logan.
Let us pray. Almighty God, you said in your word in Ecclesiastes 3:1, "There is a time for everything and a season for every activity under the heavens." Your children in the City of Jackson stand in agreement that Jackson is ready because the time is now. Almighty God, bless Mayor John Horn and the city council of the City of Jackson that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, cooperation, love, and justice. Help them to use their authority to serve faithfully, respectfully, and promote the general welfare of the people in Jackson, Mississippi. Almighty God, bless this city that brighter days are ahead because you said in your word again in Isaiah 43:18-19. And say it with me. Forget the former things. Do not dwell on the past. See, I am doing a new thing. Now it springs up. Do you not perceive it? I am making a way in the wilderness and a streams in the wasteland. Almighty God, we pray today that your Holy Spirit fire will fall down on this city. And Almighty God, as we offer this benediction and thanksgiving for your leaders, may we pray with humility and know that God is still God. God is still King of kings, Lord of lords. And all God's children, say together, amen? Amen? And amen.